The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to convene back into open session. I'm sorry for the delay. We had to wrap some things up in closed session. So thank you for being patient with us. I'd like to welcome you tonight and we're going to start with the roll call. Nancy? Mills?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Leighton Warren?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Everyone is present. We're also joined at the table by two members of our ICSC. Would you guys please introduce yourselves?
Hello, I'm Macy Saha. I'm a senior at Preble and I'm the president of Inter-City Student Council.
I'm South Arquist. I'm a senior at West and I'm representative on the Inter-City Student Council.
Welcome. Please feel free to join the discussion. Okay? Okay, would you all please rise for, stand up for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God and His will, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, would someone like to read the mission statement? Go ahead, Nancy.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. The next item is land acknowledgement statement, which I'll read. "We, the members of the Green Bay area public school district, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the 12 diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities." Next on the agenda is our open forum. We're going to start with the Inter-City Student Council report. Take it away.
Okay, so we just have updates on the schools. So for all schools, we have spring sports that are in full swing. The weather's not exactly working with our spring sports, but hopefully that will get better. Host State is next week and there are three students going from East and three students going from Preble. And then all of the junior proms are coming up over the next few weeks. At East, there was a pie fundraiser held the week before spring break and some teachers have volunteered to get pied in the face at the school assembly on Friday. Rhapsody in Red performed at Southwest. At Preble, there was a jazz night where the a cappella choir performed along with the band. Edison Choir also performed and then NHS held a bake sale at the event for some fundraising. Cabaret is coming up soon and then Student Council held the March Madness competition for the school. And Academic Decathlon did an amazing job in our advancing to Nationals.
All right, at Southwest, there's a Spring Fling Band Concert was held and it had a great turnout. At West High School, the music class members, they were for spring break, they went on a trip to Disneyland, so that's pretty fun. And coming up on the 31st is the Senior Night, so the seniors out of school can, you know, hang out, watch a movie. It's gonna be Scooby Doo, the live action version. And, you know, eat pizza, popcorn, and all that fun stuff. There was a musical and it was Shrek and I went there, it was pretty cool. And at the Academic Decathlon, I'm part of it, so it was pretty fun. I don't want to toot my own horn, but I got third place. I tied with Ian Hopp from Preble. And, yeah.
Okay. All right, and that completes your report. Okay, next is our, our public forum and we have two people who want to speak. The first person is Marcus Medina or Medina? Medina. Can you come up to the microphone? You can, you can speak at the, there and then you have five minutes. Just let us have your name and your address. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Marcus Medina. My address is 3891 Scotchman Circle. That's in the town of Scott. Thanks for having me, members of the board, superintendent. I appreciate the opportunity. I'd like to discuss some of the schooling and Green Bay Public School Systems proposed, I guess, solutions to some budgetary problems, particularly Wickwack Elementary. Wickwack Elementary is one of the best schools Green Bay Public Schools has to offer. Studies have shown environmental education promotes critical and creative thinking skills and inspires kids to become more engaged with their communities. According to the National for Education Statistics from the Wisconsin Department of Education, for the 2020-2021 school year, Wickwack scored in the top 30% in the state for test scores. Now, you have to recognize and, and also take into consideration the effects of COVID and the effects of COVID was having during education in these times. So to have that kind of score is phenomenal, outstanding, and speaks to the accreditation and the work that's happening at Wickwack Elementary. The percentage of students achieving proficiency in math is 50 to 59%, which is higher than Wisconsin's state average of 38%. Percentage in reading and language arts for Wickwack is 40 to 49%, which is higher than Wisconsin's state average of 39%. Wickwack's overall rating is over 80, with only having one other elementary school above it in Green Bay. For the 2023 school year, Wickwack's ranking is eight out of 10. The National for Education Statistics also ranks Wickwack as the sixth best elementary school in the great Green Bay area, including Howard Swamaco and a Schwab and on school districts. From 2014 to 2020, Wickwack's average enrollment was 156 students. COVID year 20 and 2021, Wickwack school lost 32% of the students. I personally know parents that transferred their kids out of Wickwack because of the restrictions during the COVID lockdowns. They left not because of the lack of education, the lack of their belief in Wickwack's educational prowess, but more so of the temporary restrictions that are now lifted. Most of these students left the district due to COVID, Green Bay's COVID rules. This year, Wickwack has 116 students enrolled, which is increasing from 104 in the 2020-2021 school year. Yet, according to the projected school enrollment link that was sent out, the district has Wickwack at a projected decrease in numbers and it was determined that a cost of each student would be around $15,000 per year. Yet historically, prior to COVID, when Wickwack averaged 156 students per year, which we are likely to achieve with the new housing development on the east side and promotion from the district, cost per student would be closer to $10,200 per student, making it a more cost-effective school. Just when we were waiting, I went over Brown County budget and looked at some spending. Did you know that the county is currently spending $100,000 on a golf pro contractor? Somebody to teach people how to golf? Let's teach people or our children the fundamentals that they need to live and thrive in Green Bay and give back to the community instead of paying $100,000 to a person to hit a golf ball. $85,000 for terminal seating and tables at an airport. The table at my house costs about $200. Does anybody know what a comfort station is at a golf course? How much does that cost? Estimates? $125,000 for something you've no idea what it is. Or how about Eagle Nest Development, a boat launch? $333,000. That's a one-time cost to develop, but there's going to be ongoing costs associated with the maintenance of that. My family and I transplanted to Green Bay from Milwaukee. One of the largest reasons that we picked the town of Scott was because of Wickwack Elementary. It's a phenomenal school and our kids are thriving. They're right back there, quiet as a peep. Having a sense of community in the conversations that I'm having with neighbors and landowners and the parents in that school. If this school shuts down, I know the projected analysis is that, well, students are just going to transfer to a different school in the Green Bay Public School District. Internally, our conversations, that's probably not going to happen. So you're just gonna lose students. You're gonna lose more students to adjacent counties and adjacent school districts.
Can you please wrap up a little bit? Five minutes are up.
Sure thing. I appreciate your time, board, and I would please encourage you to look at the budget, county and city, and also state and federal resources to try to see where we can get the funding to keep Wickwack open.
Mr. Medina, can I ask you a clarifying question?
Sure thing.
So the, the numbers that you gave were about the, from the county, the county budget?
Yes, I think it was 399 pages.
Okay. The county budget is completely separate from our budget, as is the city. We have our own budget.
Okay.
So those items do not impact our district at all. I'm not saying they're worthy. I'm not saying they're not questionable. I'm just saying that we have no control over them. That's all. So, but thank you very much.
Thank you. One clarifying question?
Yes.
Where can the public receive the budgetary allowances for the school district?
Yep, they're on our website. I don't know if someone can help you find them, but they, they are available. Always our budget is on, online, so.
Okay, and that is completely separate from county and city budget?
Yeah, our school district has a separate budget from the city. It's separate from the county as well.
Okay, is that a state funding source?
And, yeah, there's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, I'll take a look at the website. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, sure. All right. We have one more person who'd like to speak. Kate Janiak? I hope I said that right.
Thank you.
Please state your name and your address and you have five minutes.
My name's Kate Janiak, 3751 North Holland Road, New Franken. I am here tonight to express my concern for the potential closure of Wickwack. I hope my words are not falling on deaf ears as I know one, possibly even two of you will not be voting on the final decision. With all the attention on West High School, I want you to know there is a community on the east side that has been forgotten about for far too long. September 1st, 2021, my daughter Eleanor should have been starting her first day of kindergarten and first year at Wickwack. Instead, she tested positive for COVID-19. Her first day was pushed back almost two weeks. Dropping her off, I was a nervous wreck. However, those feelings quickly disappeared when the aides knew her name when they opened the car door to let her out and were expecting her with open arms. Our love for the school started quickly and has only grown. I am active with the PTO, have helped with many school functions. Eleanor has been able to do so many activities that would not have been hap- would not have been able to happen had she gone to another school. She has been excited to share her snowshoeing adventures, how she is able to restore the wild rice population along the bay of Green Bay and many lessons in the woods and outdoor classroom. Over the summer, we signed up to help weed the school garden to ensure success, excuse me, successful harvest in the fall. And we cannot forget about the two-legged friends that also call Wickwack their home, the chickens. While we enjoy the small school feeling, Wickwack has not been given the exposure and advertisement to Green Bay area and future families looking to relocate. We have been set up for failure by the district. Families from Oak Learning Center should have been steered towards Wickwack, being it's the Center for Environmental Science and both share a close relationship with their curriculums and focus on the outdoors. In a survey of Green Bay area moms, of 481 people who took the survey, 37% over 180 people have never heard of Wickwack. Of those who had heard of it, 25% of them weren't even aware that Wickwack was a Center for Environmental Science. Wickwack has not been showcased to the community in a way it deserves, and now our children are going to suffer. Had more people known about our school, enrollment numbers would not be an issue. Speaking to a member of the task force, they had mentioned that the boiler system would need to be replaced soon. And based on the long-range facility assessment study, the boiler system is near the end of expected useful life. I do understand that it makes more sense to replace it before it goes out. With Wickwack being an environmental school, it would be a perfect place to look at alternative energy sources to help with operate lower to help lower operating costs. I am sure there are even grants out there that would help with the initial cost. Another concern we have are the incorrect projected enrollment numbers for the far east side by the task force. There are numerous residential development plans already completed showing large growth in our area. Speaking to the town chair, for the town of Scott, they too are expecting more growth. We cannot consider closing a school, moving these children to another school that's close to capacity when there is going to be more enrollments in the future. I strongly encourage you to look at all Wickwack has to offer to the students and to the community. Please, don't close our school. You will be stripping away so many irreplaceable learning opportunities for our children. You, the board, along with the district, should be looking at ways to advertise the uniqueness of Wickwack and the ways, and ways to fill the chairs, not to be removing the chairs from the school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Did anyone else want to speak? All right, the next on our agenda is the consent agenda approval. I would entertain a motion. Would anyone like to read the motion?
I want to approve the consent agenda.
Second? Kinsy? Online voting is now open. Brian, are you able to vote?
Vote aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda, our discussion items, and the first is Facilities Master Plan Task Force Recommendations for Listening Session Dates. Vicki?
All right, Kinsy's gonna pull up a draft of our recommendation. Again, I'd like to thank the board for their commitment to ensuring we get voice before making a pretty serious decision. So our recommendation is as follows. On May 8th, the Facilities Task Force will bring their recommendation to the board. ATS and I will be here for that. And they will stay the next couple of days if, if the board likes this plan. The next day, May 9th, that's Tuesday, and May 11th, or May 10th, Wednesday, we recommend doing roundtable information sessions where community members, parents can join us. We'd number them off, so they would be sitting at tables. ATS and I would facilitate a discussion about the recommendations that came to the board on Monday night. And then we would lead conversations at the table to gather their input and then bring that back to the board. Then, May 24th, I think that's a Wednesday? Okay, May 24th, we recommend a listening session at Southwest High School. Our recommendation is to have sign up between 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM. I know 4:00 PM doesn't always work, but our thought was, and thank you Laurie Blakesley for thinking of our staff and students. The thought was, when school gets out, if students and staff wanted to come, they could come right to Southwest, share their comments, and then we would have sign up all the way up until 7:00 PM. Three-minute presentations such as they do in other forms of government. We would gather that information as well and continue with the online feedback form as well as parents, community members, students being able to reach out directly to board members as they have been. So, discussion for the board, please.
Brian?
I like the concept with it. I'm just kind of concerned with the locations. Obviously, it makes sense to, that's really loud, to have one at West, but could I propose that we look at either East or Washington for the, instead of a Preble? Since Washington's being impacted on a lot of these plans as well, I think, I think it makes more sense to look at that area for the meeting with the impact of some of these plans looking towards Washington and perhaps having the listening session also either at West or East as opposed to Southwest, maybe switch, switching the two just because of the number of students that we're hearing with, you know, with the West proposals on there as well, but that May 10th one instead of a Preble at East or Washington would be my suggestion.
Were those locations chosen for any particular reason?
I, I think we had looked at West for one later on, but they weren't available that night. Lori?
The issue was what, what wasn't available. So, because I got Washington Middle School certain, I think we looked at high school setting.
Do the microphone. Do the microphone, so.
So we can look at Washington Middle School, but I know that we had looked at, I think on the May 24th, the only high school that was available was Preble and Southwest, but I can, we can all check on East, but I know we had thought about doing it at West because a lot of the, and I think part of the reason for trying to do a West school was because we know a lot of the conversation is dealing on the west side of the district. So wanting to make it convenient for west side families, but I can certainly check with East if that's your preference. I'm not sure if they'll be available though. True, yes.
Okay, so the, the, the decision wasn't based on location, it was based on availability. Okay, all right. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, James.
I just want to make sure that I understood your comments. Are these noted such that any board member that wants to attend can attend these? Is, you'd establish it, you would bring the information back to us, but if we wanted to go and listen to the comments and hear firsthand, we can participate in the discussions?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and post these. Most certainly, the May 24th would be specifically for the board.
Okay, Andrew?
The history of this, I believe the, I'm, I'm sure that unless someone was unable to make it, the intent was the entire board went to the last roundtable discussion that we had and I remember because it had to get moved to a Saturday and I had to leave Operation Snowball for it. That was when we were talking about the armed guards. And I think the whole board was there and participated in the tables and circulated around the tables. I mean, it's a while ago. We haven't talked about, we have not talked about armed guards in a while, nor are we doing so right now. That just happened to be the topic of the last one in that format. I guess I don't, I don't think there, I don't think there should be an end time on May 24th. I think if more than 60 people show up, more than 60 people show up. But I, otherwise like the schedule, I prefer to get Washington in if we can simply because they're affected, you know, Preble, both would be a great facility, but Washington's, I, yeah, I'd like to see it there.
So is it the district's intent to shut it down at 7:00? I had interpreted that as you could sign up up until 7:00, but the actual comment period will go until everyone that's signed up speaks, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Brian?
I assume that we'll have translators available as we do for most of the listening sessions and things that we've done in the past. Another possible idea is just, some people are uncomfortable going into schools, you know, just for whatever reason, of the possibility of the Brown County Library or someplace that's not even a school. Just, just to put it out there, just so we can engage parents that may not feel comfortable coming into a building with it as a possibility, but.
I'll do whatever the board wants. This is really for you.
To, to follow up with that, I mean, there's, there's a lot of studies that show engagement can be limited by just the concept of going into the school and the setting that takes place with it. You know, there, there's, there's a lot of, or several studies that relate to that, and I just want to make it as open and welcoming to parents that may not, or family members that for whatever reason may not have felt comfortable coming into schools in the past. I'm perfectly fine with this plan as well. Just to take that into consideration with it. So, whether the Brown County Library or some other community building that is open and available for it.
Okay. Go ahead, Nancy.
About the same thing, though, is some people feel very comfortable going to schools and they're familiar with it and they know where to go and they know where the library is and they know where to park. And so I think, you know, it's kind of a horse of peace on that.
And there's an option of always sending us an email as well, you know, if they don't want to be in a public venue. I, I understand that anxiety. So, but we can give that some more consideration. We should probably talk about that. Go ahead, Laura.
That was my only comment, was I appreciate that these being put in place, but also if we could publicize as well how to provide written input to the board as well, or to call if they want to provide feedback that way.
Okay. Andrew?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, do we, we have possibly to have virtual feedback either, either within these sessions or in its own discreet session?
Can you clarify that?
Yeah, like a remote, whether, you know, people could be called and participate remotely like they, they do, we do here or, or perhaps given the three-minute nature of it, if it would make more sense to just schedule a meeting for everyone who wanted to do virtual.
Go ahead.
I would be assuming that this would be a hosted meeting, so we would still have the same capacity that we have in other things, but with it being posted, that also gives us the opportunity to have the comments where, like during open forum, we, by policy, we can't respond to people speaking. can't respond to people speaking by having, that's the whole intent of having this posted. So I would assume that we're going to have this broadcast on YouTube and similar things that we do for other board meetings.
We, the, the plan would be to be in either a cafeteria or auditorium, which would make that difficult. And I would point out, virtual option, we still have a regular board meeting on May 22nd, where community parents could call in.
Just plan according to that, that might be a more lengthy public forum period than normal. Andrew?
So I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with saying if you wanted to do virtual, that, you know, we'd have the, the May 22nd. I'm fine with that. But, yeah, I think, I think I kind of agree with Brian.
Which part?
Um. Kind of losing my train of thought, but I got, yeah.
Okay. Any more feedback? Brian.
And just in general, we always had the opportunity as board members to reach out to our buildings that were assigned and other ones and meet with staff and things as well, just as part of our regular duties as board members to, to get the feedback as well, so.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't remember. The, the point of, is it really that the quality might not be as, as good, but to, to stream from a, to stream from a building, especially if it was going to be focused on, you know, you could just do a steady, steady shot, couldn't you? I mean, this is, 10 years ago, maybe, maybe tricky, but probably not so bad now.
I, I, I do this a lot in, in hybrid meetings where there's a, a remote population and onsite population, and there's interactions and discussion around a roundtable. Those are poorly, poorly presented, and the remote participants get very little out of that. A still shot doesn't cover it. If, you need to be present to participate in a roundtable kind of discussion.
None of that is what I meant, but I agree.
What did you mean?
Streaming the forums. Not, not, not to have people call into it, just the, is that what you meant, friends? Live streams?
Yeah. Go ahead, Melissa.
So we have to still comply with all of the requirements that we have to comply with with streaming whatever we put up on the district's website, which means we have to be ADA compliant, which means we have to have closed captioning. And so the only way closed captioning works is if you can hear it, which is why we use microphones, and two of people aren't talking over each other. So within the, the forums that you've had set up, the roundtables that will not facilitate the ability to do that. And then with respect to being at a location at a, one of our other schools, we don't have a microphone system like this in order for the volume and the, to be able to be captured. So I don't know. I, I mean, we can work with, contract with Camera Corner, or Lori can look into that, but I just want to make sure that you understand, if we stream, we have to comply with the ADA requirements as well.
James?
If we stream.
If you stream. You, you're not required to stream. You are not required to stream at all.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
Melissa, sorry. If we choose to record it and share on the district website, are we able to do that then?
It has to be closed captioned.
Laura?
To me, I think the, the purpose is that we hear feedback from the people in the community, not necessarily that they hear each other's feedback. So, which is why I'm okay with it set up the way it is, because it's important that we hear what they're having to say, that the administration, everybody hears what they're having to say. But it's not as important that they hear what each other says, in my opinion.
Okay. All right, any more feedback? Do you have what you need, Vicky?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, we're going to move on to the legislative update, which will be James.
Thank you, Laura. I'll move quickly through the updates. It's available in memo form on the, the site. But we've already, I think, talked through the meeting with Joel, Representative Kitchens. And I think that was during our last board meeting. So, new to this meeting, we did have a, a group of us, Lori Blakesley, Claudia Hendrickson, myself, Jackie Howser, Julie Seifeld, all go to the Capitol as part of the Wisconsin Association of School Board Day at the Capitol. We met with all of our representatives, area representatives, several made, even though it was a floor session, the effort to meet with us in person, Representative Kitchens, Representative Shelton, and Senator Winberger were all present and spent some time with us. Ultimately, the budget season is started, but it's early. None of the representatives really have taken a position on the budget because they're all waiting for the additional reports to come out of the state agencies that will kind of help them make decisions based on the feasibility of the governor's budget. But anecdotally, coming out of those meetings, there was an understanding that more than minimum increases in funding from the state were required. They recognized the funding problem that was set up over the last couple of years. So that was positive. And there was, most of the questions and the conversations kind of centered around Fund 27 on the special education and what, you know, appropriate funding looked like there. Most of our efforts within those offices were in collaboration with other local districts, and all of us were saying the same messaging, which I think was very positive, all facing kind of the same problems. So, the rest of the, the legislative update is just a series of bills that are actually receiving action right now, legislative action. Assembly Bill 53 is one that we want to call out. It has some requirements that school districts report crimes. The pushback from our district is because we co-locate several of our schools with public parks and city properties that do not have a physical address, police officers will often report criminal activity at the park using a school address, which would be an anomaly in our reporting. And the next bill down, Assembly Bill 69, actually requires that, given certain criminal activity, and once you hit a threshold of about 100, and a percentage of those requiring arrest, you have to fund an officer, right? So those are some things that the district is trying to get more information about. The one interesting bill, Senate Bill 91, authored by Andre Jacques, actually, he is putting forth legislation that requires that the state fund mandates and not pass any more unfunded mandates, which is a very impressive position that Senator Jacques has taken, which would impact special education. And what we're finding is, I know that there's been hearings about the literacy, reading literacy there, and the concern there is they'll take legislative action and not fund the legislative actions. So anything that the district can do to communicate to Senator Jacques that we are right there with him would be appropriate communication. Other than that, the rest of it's in the memo. So, any questions?
Um, oh, I'm sorry. Anyone? Go ahead, Brian.
These, the hearings from the Joint Finance Committee, do you know if that's an inclusive list, or are they planning on, have you heard anything about them extending it to other areas of the state, like the northeast part of the state?
No, we're completely left out. So, I apologize for skipping over that. There are upcoming joint finance listening sessions, Waukesha County, UW O'Clare, Wisconsin Dells, and Monaca. So, south, the northeast area does not have a listening session. It may be because the governor had a listening session at UWGB recently, and so they feel like we've been heard, but it wasn't the joint finance, so.
Just for clarification, no place north of Fond du Lac up to the state border, west to Wausau has one, except for Monaca. Okay?
Yeah, the, the very populous Fox Valley, yes, will, will not get a hearing.
Andrew?
So it would be fair to say probably that it's mostly districts like, well, especially us with the co-located park thing, that could almost wonder if they were being targeted to be set up for a bad report, one might wonder. And then, I guess as far as the, if, if you look at what, if you look at what school districts would be the only ones who are big enough, probably, to have enough crimes, however that's defined, to be forced to do the officer, it would not, it, it would be the least wealthy districts that probably, probably would fit that mold.
So this is joint finance. So those are mutually exclusive, like those bills that they're going through the Education Committee. And so they, that's not the intent, right? And if you look at where these are taking place, I don't think you could make a case that they're trying to avoid large urban districts, with Wisconsin Dell being, you know, very close to Madison, Waukesha being very close to Milwaukee. I, I don't see a trend or anything.
I didn't mean that at all. I meant the, the police, the hire an officer if you have over X number of crimes, not, not the location of the hearings about it, the, the bills. The bills themselves are going to impact the urban, urban districts, the less wealthy districts, they're gonna, you're kind of, yeah.
Brian.
So looking at this, and I don't know, Vicky, if this is something that can be related to other through our safety person or through your contacts with the police department. I'm looking at the city's webpage, and every park has an address. So, Joannie's Skate Park is 215 South Baird. That shouldn't be sent to 314 South Baird or Walnut Street. And every park has a physical address when you go through to reserve it. So, if it's a practice of the police department to be doing that, that should be remedied as quickly as possible with it. So, the reasoning of saying that the city parks don't have addresses, according to Green Bay WI.gov, they do. So.
Good, James.
I would just add, if a student reports something to an SRO or police officer on campus, that's the site of the, okay.
Still, I think that we should follow up on your comments, right? And if it is a practical matter that the police officer is lazy because there's not a, a posted address there at site, that's.
Right.
We, we have a strong relationship with the city on a lot of things. And I think that, not speaking for another group, I think that the police department would recognize that that is something that can be cleaned up in some sort of spreadsheet or some sort of reporting with it, not knowing how they have to report on to the, the details and stuff. But the parks have their own addresses on there, so.
James, I'm going to assume that WASB, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, is vehemently against that bill requiring a police officer.
Um, I'm not familiar with their position on that specific bill.
A little seni, yeah.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Dan Ross.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that, that isn't, I think a lot of districts are not going to appreciate that very much. So, um, any, anybody else? There's a lot of good information in, in this report. I, I found it very interesting. Just for anyone who's listening to this, our district has in the last year or so started to kind of beef up our advocacy and to reach out more and more to our elected officials, meeting with them, touring schools with them, going to them and talking to them and their staff, because this budget is going to be so incredibly decisive for our district in particular, but for every district in this state. I just read today, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the exact number, but it was a number that made me go huh. The amount of referendums in this state that are on the ballot in April is like a record number. It's, I want to say like 50 plus?
67?
Sixty, 68 referendums. This is an indicator that something is very wrong with how we fund education. I say, I'm just speaking for myself now. But our, the, the people who are part of our state legislature hopefully are listening to their constituents and are going to do things, you know, you, you met with them. And, you know, hopefully they're feeling the pressure. So what we need to do, I think, is keep that pressure there respectfully and, and do more of this going forward so that, that our, our district in particular is well represented and that we leave no question with our electeds as to where our needs are and what our plans are. Go ahead.
And in order to lobby and advocate, you don't need to be a registered voter to contact your assembly person. You don't need to be a voting age to contact your assembly person. And you are directly impacted by public education in this state.
Yes. Yes. So I, I'm, I think that we'll, we'll keep, keep this work up when, whenever we can. So, I just wanted to say that and to assure people who are watching that this, this is part of our work now.
And, and this is just, we're in watch mode, right? And it'll be, you know, that late May and June, we will start seeing the position that our local representatives take on the budget based on the additional information that will come out of state agencies about it. And that's when that advocacy will be really impactful, right? There, we asked in every meeting, you know, what's your position? And it's, they need more information right now. And it's going to be late May or June legislative action.
Okay. Yes.
But this is also a great time for people to make those connections beforehand, become informed on what the proposals are, just as we are, and to reach out to them.
Yeah. So when you see them out in the community, which happens from time to time, don't be afraid to go up and remind them of their duty to our kids. So, all right, any other questions? Go ahead, Brian.
Part of the discussions that we've had with other task force things and everything that we've been working on is directly related to a deficit, which is directly related to school funding. So, families are concerned about changes that we have to propose. Contacting and advocating for public education is another path to help this.
Yeah. I mean, we're really now, I mean, that number of referendums shocked me. This is how we fund education now through referendums. It's very unpredictable funding. You can't count on it. And it's not a good way to, to fund a, a public education, not just in our district. So, we're drifting off the subject here a little bit, but a very provocative, not provocative, very thorough report. Thank you, James. Okay, the next thing under action is the settlement offer for government and entity claims against Juul. Just, um. What's that? Oh, yeah, I, I just, we're Oh, yeah, I, I just, we're going to be voting on a bunch of things here. They've all been discussed in a previous, um, in a previous meeting. We can discuss them again tonight as well, um, but, but there'll be the next, uh, kind of to the, uh, the rest of the meeting will be us voting on, on things that were discussed in our work session a couple of weeks ago. So, um, would someone like to read the motion? Uh, I'm sorry?
I'll make the motion. Uh, I move that confidential settlement agreement with Juul be accepted and that the district claims pursuant to this matter be resolved.
Second. Any discussion? Any questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Next, other post-employment benefits, OPEB report. Go ahead.
I move that the other post-employment benefits report as presented be approved.
Second. Discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Next, um, Canvas slash Mastery Connect purchasing recommendation.
I move that the purchase of Canvas Learning Management System Mastery Connect in the amount of $2,811,624.97 as presented be approved.
Second. Andrew?
Just wanted to point out that we are in a situation where we have uh, remaining one-time money that, that needs to be spent here. So unfortunately, the, the way the state system works, we would actually be penalized if we decided, you know, people are saying, well, with all these budget cuts, why wouldn't you hold this off and do a rainy day fund with it? It's because we would actually be punished in state aid for saving. And that, that is a real thing. It's counterintuitive, but that is real. So if, if circumstances were different and we could delay, maybe delay this and offset some future problems, I would, but it's one-time money that has to be expended or it would be, some of it would be lost. Um, so.
And the system is going to benefit our, our district enormously in, for years to come. So, um, thank you. Anybody else? James?
Yeah, I was one of the, uh, board members that requested a little bit more time to consider this. Uh, and I want to, uh, you know, express my appreciation to the, the district for meeting with me and, and walking me through. I was, you know, focused on the implementation plan of this during that meeting. Uh, it was my understanding that we're targeting about 22 courses to be up and running through and, and for the, um, the new year, um, and requested that we make an agenda item of, um, after the beginning of the next school year, but to revisit this topic and, and make sure that the implementation plan was going as expected and that those 22 courses were up and running.
Yeah, I'd love to have an update too. That'd be great. Thank you, James. Any other questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next, de-elimination of Spanish and French courses at middle school level.
I move that the elimination of Spanish 1A, Spanish 1B, French 1A, and French 1B courses offered at the middle school as presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Go ahead, Brian.
Um, during the meeting, and I'm looking, Dr. Schatz here, if you have any information for me on this. Um, I brought up a concern that I had heard from a school counselor regarding how that would impact scheduling for school counselors and the change in a every other day to a day one, I'm sorry, to every day year round, um, from an every other day. And if there's any domino effect down there. And I was told I'd get some information. I don't know if I missed it or not.
Was I supposed to share that? I, I might. I might have not shared it.
Go ahead and hit the microphone, please.
As my understanding Andrea Landwehr shared that plan with you. That, that's okay. Um, if they don't have it, I, I can also have to reshare it. But there would not be an impact to that, Brian.
And I plan on voting in favor for it. I just, this was a concern that was brought up to me by, um, staff members. So I just want that on the radar of when we go into this, when our school counselors are working master schedules and scheduling, obviously one thing can impact it and it was concerns that I had heard. So I'm going to assume that's being taken care of and it's being addressed. So.
That is correct. In fact, um, what we're coming down to is the record, the number of teachers we're going to be already know, we're going to be short for Spanish. So what it comes down to, either we prepare and plan, or we react when we don't have the teachers in September. And we got in that pickle this year that we just don't want to repeat that. Okay, you bet. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? All right. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered. The motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is Exploring World Cultures Course Offering.
I move that the course Exploring World Cultures be developed and offered to grade seven middle school students as presented be approved.
Second. Discussion, questions? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next, Spanish one course offering at eighth grade level.
I move that the Spanish one course be offered at the eighth grade level with the option of earning one high school credit as presented be approved.
Second. Discussion. Questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Next. Contracts under Wisconsin Statute Section 118.22. Oh. Go ahead, Andrew.
Um, I move that the issuance of contracts as outlined under Wisconsin Statute Section 118.22 for the 2023 school year as presented be approved.
Second. Discussion. Go ahead, Brian.
Um, I can't vote on this one because my wife's employed and she'd be very upset if we had one contract pulled out. So, and most of this is the only one on this, correct?
Okay. Thank you. Andrew?
And just, just to be clear for the record, this is the, um, this is the teacher, this is all teachers contracts. So, uh, when you're looking at the teachers contracts, just with the sheer numbers of, of list would be impractical at, for this particular contact.
Okay. Anyone else? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Layton and Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lyerly, yes. Mills abstain.
Thank you. Next, E-Rate Access Points Contract Recommendation.
I'll go back to it. I move that the purchase of E-Rate Access Points is presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Again, I just want to remind everyone these have been discussed by the board in a previous meeting. And we're having, uh, we're just voting tonight, but also offering the opportunity to discuss again. So, uh, next on the agenda, Head Start COVID-19 mitigation pro, policy.
I move that the Head Start COVID-19 mitigation policy is presented be approved.
Second. Discussion, questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next, Policy 511 Equal Opportunity Employment and Non-Discrimination.
I move that the revisions to Board Education Policy 511 Equal Opportunity Employment and, um, non-discrimination as presented be approved.
Second. Questions? Discussion. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next, Policy 535.12 Break Time for Nursing Mothers.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy 535.12 Break Time for Nursing Mothers as presented be approved.
Second. Discussion or questions? James?
Looking at the red line, I wasn't able, maybe it's, uh, the incorrect copy. I was not able to ascertain the changes with the policy. The red line is not redlined. Unless I just missed it.
Yes. Well.
Would it be in last week's? Or work session?
Can you summarize it all?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for that. The changes are, um, explicitly adding in the, um, category of protections for break time for nursing mothers as well as a designated process, an individual within human resources for receiving complaints with respect to if the district is not providing the rights under the statute. In large part, we were providing already the break time as well as a designated area that's not a restroom, but just calling out the exact specific procedure. And it's now its own category rather than just falling under non-discrimination based on sex.
So as I look at it, like section D, is that whole section was probably the ad? Okay.
That's correct. Okay. Go ahead.
This is the clean version, though, is correct. Okay.
Any other questions, any discussion? Okay. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. And finally, Policy 742 Use of District Equipment by Persons Affiliated with the District.
I move that the adoption of Policy 742 Use of District Equipment by Persons Affiliated with the District as presented be approved.
Second. Questions? Discussion. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Very good. Okay, that completes our agenda. Go ahead. Yeah.
With the stated board agenda for the future, do we know when we will get next fall's proposed calendar, meeting dates? Or we just, I assume we follow the same pattern?
And, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll do a draft. Sorry. We'll do a draft and it'll be presented to the board the last meeting of April when you vote on your officers.
Okay. Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So much.
Second. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you guys for coming.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.